This is Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 1st special meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Okay, I hope everybody to be a special town council meeting. The box is closed.
No, it starts.
Oh, I'm sorry. That doesn't matter. Never mind, never mind.
Everybody said.
Okay, uh, stand. We need my. Openation on your behalf. You're so. Whether you should be just. Opening remarks. The meeting is not open and. Do you quit? No. Move it. Uh, committee and board questions of the A P C and the B C A. I like to recommend that we schedule an executive session of our council to have a discussion about all the nuances of appointment because it is very complicated in. I'll make that as an.
Okay. So before you go further, some kind of.
Same thing.
Mike. As context, you can have an executive session to speak about the candidates. So as I understand it correctly, you have a list of candidates who have submitted their names and interests limits to the A B C and or B C A. So you're allowed to do, you're allowed to have an executive session to discuss qualifications and those candidates. And even parts with two, three candidates that can't personally be listed out. Less than that, you don't have to parse them out at all in any interviews for potential appointees would have to be done in a public meeting. As far as the nuances, it is quite a puzzle. So I can explain that briefly why it might make sense that you do have an executive session to discuss your candidates and qualifications, but there are going to be two openings on the A P C and two openings on the B C A. The B C A appointments are one from the A P C and one that is a presidential or town executive. On the A P C, they are both president or town executive appointments, but they're by consent. It's the way your town vote is written, which means Dr. LeMay can nominate despite consent of the entire town council. There's also some other that aren't up this time, but appointments by the town council in general. So Aaron lies in the puzzle and making sure everybody applies with the requirements. For the A P C, there are certain requirements as to if it applies. Political party, make sure people are residences and stuff. But for your, I just want to get to be clear, be clear for the public. The reason for an exec session would be if you were inclined to need to discuss your candidates as well as qualifications so that you could indeed. Patient to be able to vote.
Second, any other discussion? All things say aye? No, we don't. Because there's. So I. Think you might have to get something out. Well, I've taken most of 48 hours before.
Maybe before your town council meeting next week, if that works.
Yeah.
We have a town council next week.
Yeah, so I'll move it. I think finish it up. So I can this week, but again, it's going to happen.
Forty-eight hours, 48 hours.
Yeah. And you have it on my show now. Walking out.
Okay, we get to send this on the date, so we don't just. Trying to get it done before Monday. I know I'm, I've got one saying that as a problem or an ex problem. So I'd say, I believe personally, I would hope that we get, can't take it, but. I mean, this is important enough for the exec sessions to have, at least most of us, not all of us. No, I think it's important. I think it's important to have everybody's input. I think timing wise for your boards, for instance, the B C A right now, anybody who comes before the B C A has to have you hand this decision. Three numbers sitting. So time is of the essence for you to find time. If Monday doesn't work, but you're shortly going to have to have a council, a special meeting to appoint. If you're inclined to, but your boards or commissions are struggling with the numbers potentially. So if Monday works out great, I think that you need to make sure you have a lot of time to have a full discussion of the situation of all your candidates.
I've got a daughter, two days, Sunday, so definitely a complication, but this.
Well, can we do it for five o'clock on Monday?
That's it.
Can we do it five o'clock next Monday, four thirty?
That would work.
Hmm.
That would work for me.
Yeah. Two plus one. One, two, three.
Okay.
Monday.
I prefer that.
Monday, five. All right. Okay, it's. This is. Action. Then it's. So yeah, sort of. Good.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Uh, next agenda, I didn't discuss the team path repairs. So yeah, I was down there yesterday. Yeah, that app is really well with that near the coast of the snow. So John, that's the proposal.
So. We met. We met down there. New batteries. We met down there on a couple of occasions, first of all, with the group from the local community and also then with the contractor that Park Board has used previously. And we knocked around a few ideas. Tom Dolph was down there. One of our issues is that the outlet for the stormwater that's coming down from the street at Stop 18 had big head sized rocks down at the bottom of the outfall. Because of all the erosion since the lake came up, it knocked a hole in the foredune. Then the water came down this, this flume or this pipe that we have. And people actually picked up as that or further erosion occurred, the people picked up the head sized rocks and got them out of the way so they could not be. So we had this situation where erosion continues to happen. So we want to bridge over that, but we have to replace the rocks so that when the water hits it from the pipe, it doesn't continue to blow the foredune out. So it's kind of a little bit of a complex situation. The proposal is that the contractor would come down, save some uprights. The town, Tom's guys, the street department would replace the rock in front of the outlet so that it doesn't further erode the foredune. And then the contractor would come back in and put the decking in. The park department made a good suggestion. They think, may we need a rail down there? So the long and short of it is we had a $6,500 not to exceed proposal from Sully. So.
So.
So, yeah. Which is the contractor that we've been using. As, as a coincidence, the person that I think either owns or runs that company is a local individual as well. So he's done a lot of work for the park board, so I think it's a reputable outfit. But the $6,500 not to exceed cost would be increased by whatever the railing might cost. So my suggestion tonight, my mission, I guess my motion would be, can we approve an $8,000 number just to make sure you've got enough money in the proposal so that he can do that work? He may not need the $6,500 in the original, but he may need a little bit for the rear. So I think if we say a not to exceed 8,000, the problem we have right now is people are actually falling down down there. It's, it's a pretty unsafe situation if we don't do something. Now, the caveat to that all is eventually we hope to do, you know, more long range planning with the stops like the park department has done in the past. But in this particular situation, if we hurry up and get this done, then we at least finish the season without, you know, without the unsafe situation, then we can look at further improvements down there. So that's my motion, $8,000 to not exceed for that work.
Having talked down the beach yesterday through that path, I would second that motion. Discussion. All things to say aye?
Aye.
I can.
Really? Yeah. That's it. That's it. Two was wrong.
Keep me out of one special. Sure. Discuss. Yeah. My question is, just from a safety standpoint, how am I achieving? Answer this. There's an emergency on the lake on the stop. How do you get emergency equipment down there with it? Ambulance or rescue people or, I mean, I, to get a piece of equipment there.
Currently for us to bring our ATVs down, we come down at stop 14 from the west and from the east at stop 31. So those are the two points that we enter the beach currently. So we would enter at. We proceed east from there and then we stop at stop 27 because we get the sea wall at 27. Then we know if it's anything east of 27, we enter at 31 and then from 31 we go west. Those are our two points of entry currently. So if something happened that. If I stopped 22, 23, we would enter at 14 and it was down there. We can, in those discussions, we're looking at 24, we could make some future changes there. This year we try it coming, we try it coming up from stop 24. It's just a little too steep for us currently with some of the bigger roads that are there. Eventually 24 will be a great access point for us as well. So then we'd be at 14, 24 and 31. So. That could be an issue. I mean, currently we, I mean, coming off the beach, I was down there the whole fourth of July, we did it myself on the A T V. I had a problem getting down and off from 14. It may take us a little bit longer, but then, you know, but stop in B C two. But currently.
I mean, I didn't think there was something.
Driving maybe we're going around many more of the beach stops. I mean, we get access from 16 currently. I just don't want to ride over the boardwalk because we really installed there. So that's why I stay away from 16. I'm running from it 14 instead of 16. It's just a short distance there. Otherwise, if we fire any police, we can come down at any stop, anytime, even like stop 19 and that. We have a way, we'll find a way down. There's private property owners along there. Well, we could work with it down there. We'd be. Yeah. That ways to get down there. And we research it every spring where we're coming down and up from because the water falls as well. In fact, John and I were there earlier this spring and discussed it.
But those are only two access points to get down the lake.
Currently for what we do.
What you're talking about access points, John, I mean, like if somebody's drowning, everybody comes down that foot. So they can legally, we can get down through private property if we have to. That's the way the water goes. So we can get down to access the lake for certain situations. If you're talking about vehicle access, that's a different story. So vehicle access in terms of A T V access, we don't have an A T V with body carrying capability right now anyway. We've improvised on occasion, we'll take one of our baskets and send it across wise. But generally speaking, we don't have vehicle access anywhere really. No.
Which is, which is a good point. And that's what we talked about is getting a all-train vehicle that's four seater carry port for snow down that we could put a backboard out of stretcher on the back. But four police and fire teams would use jointly. We're just being, we're starting to be pretty hopeless for that, the reasons and that. So we recently received a $10,000 donation from a resident that was at purchase. And then I'm currently researching equipment that would be utilized for that. And then I'll come to the council with a full price, five dollar per day. Hopefully this fall, with my goal to have it ready for the spring 2023. Just like we did with life rigs, we're trying to improve our public safety, the equipment that we have on our lake. I think life rigs is a big step for our community. I know in the beach, their association is currently looking at installing life rig rigs from stop 31 to 36 as well. So there's all great discussion points that we're looking at for the future.
Right.
I think anecdotally too, John, I would like to see us as a town have a workshop or a brainstorming session and say, you know, in the long run, what do we want to do with all of our steps? You know, I've got a sunfish. I can't put it anywhere right now. I'd love to have a place to drag it down to the beach. So I think there's things, constituencies that the town has. I think we need to probably at some point say, what do we want to do? You know, the park board's done a great job stops over the years. You know, it could come to pass that they're going to finish up that work eventually, you know, to their satisfaction. And we have to think about what do we want to do with these steps. And Monday.
Towns, towns do have a circle of lots. Several, several parcels on the left side, I don't know. But basically you realize at some point access, something we get into.
When you look at 24, you know, what we've developed so far with that grain wire, there's a whole number of slug to the east there with all that concrete debris and stuff. We could roll some sand down there and improve that and make it look nice, but we could also, you know, promote.
From access.
Yes. But those are kind of a little longer term. The worry right now is if we don't do something with 18, somebody gets hurt. You know, we're now in a area of this situation. So if somebody gets hurt down there, it's a little tough to defend if we know we've got a problem, we didn't do it. That's my, my personal taking it.
You know, one of the problems with that pit out is that there's roots that are exposed as well. Sure. On point at stop 18. Excellent. Any other discussion?
You really can't just throw some more sand out there because, because the next rainstorm throws it out into the lake or if the lake comes up, it might burst.
I'd like to ask a question, if I may. On the Zoom. Uh, my name's Doug Levy. I live at 1707 Wildamore, which is right there at stop 18. Could you describe in greater detail what the bridge or overpass would look like connecting the boardwalk to the beach? Cause that's at the end of the boardwalk is where these boulders are and where the, the step down or the elevation change from the boardwalk down to the sand is significant. I mean, you have to, you have to really stretch to get down there safely. And, and with the exposed rocks, of course, it's the hazard that you described. So are they talking, you talking about building a bridge over that entire area down to the water?
The intent is to start at the elevation of what I'll call the boardwalk, whatever you want to call it, the wooden path that comes down. If you recall, there's a lower wooden path when you get down to that area. That's buried by about a couple of foot of sand and a bunch of dune grass. We're not going to be at that elevation. We're going to start at the elevation of the, of the better looking or the larger walkway that goes up. I think it's like five or six feet wide. So the intent is to start at that elevation at the top and then bridge across. You probably, it'll probably step down once or twice. We hope to just ramp it down. If we cannot, we might have a step or so, just like you have on the walkway down from the street. So it'll be about, you know, at a minimum four feet wide, going through the gap. And then you'll wind up stepping down to the beach before the end of the foredune, if you can imagine that. So it'll, it'll actually be at the elevation of that walkway that we're talking about, plus or minus a step or two over the top of what you, where the rock is now or should be now. But we will replace the rock in that gully, so to speak, before the ramp goes down. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, the, the gully is where everyone is kind of forced to step now. And you're right, the rocks have been moved away to create a pathway there for folks. And that's, it's, it always concerned me. It's been that way for a little bit and it does, it is dangerous for sure.
So just, so just to add to that conversation, if that can continue this conversation. I would like to add that I did speak to the resident who immediately is west of that path as well. We indicated that in recent weeks, he's allowed some help with the residents to travel through his backyard to get down to Lakefront because he also had safety concerns and he was very appreciative that the town is looking at immediately fixing this. So it would be my recommendation to the town council tonight that we move forward with this request tonight. Because they have a great idea, they have a workshop down the road, they're looking at the future of the stops. But this one, I think it's an immediate need that can be addressed by the contractor. We have residents trying to go down to the beach. I think this is a great fix for right now until we look at the direction.
Mark, can, do you think we could have fewer steps for the boulder people?
I think when John and I know the contractor down there, the plan that he gave us is to connect to the existing boardwalk that's area with boardwalk and to try and do the same thing, bring it down to a solid platform, trying to mediate any type of.
The stairs. Cause I think for people, you know, a lot of our beach stops have lots of steps. And if that could be a smooth transition, that'd be really great.
John said to the contractor, we'd rather try and be as easy as possible for residents to get down on the beach.
Any other discussion? John, you want to restate your portion?
Again, it's just to appropriate about 8,000 not to exceed. Hopefully it's going to come in considerably less than that, but I think that will give us a little bit of leeway on the railing that Jay's proposing for this, I don't know what I'm calling it, for the ramp work down to stop 18.
I accept them already. All things to say aye? Aye. All right.
Mark, can we put safety cones down there so people see it or?
No, there's not really a lot of.
It's.
Just a thought.
I have, it's a danger. Johnny?
Do you recall how quickly you can start that? It was called peak hours or so.
Yeah, so keep in mind it's going to be phased. The way the nature of the beast is because all the rocks have been moved, we need to get the rocks back in place during this process. So the contractor will come down. Part of his 6,500 was, he wasn't sure if there was rock underneath him. He made, you know, a jackhammer to break them up, so he included some of that, which hopefully he won't need. He'll come down and put the uprights in. He works on the weekends and then Tom will come in, put the rock down and then the, the ramp will be installed. So it's, it's at least a weekend, a two week process. I don't think it'll extend much more than that. He sounded like he can get to it pretty quick.
I think if you put a pair of K's cones right, you got, they're going to still go around on the apps. I think maybe as far as the resident tonight, we do with him, us, yes, sooner or later.
I just thought of something down, what do you inherit? Then it's dead.
It would be very difficult to, you know, what's there. Who let the contractor start ordering?
Okay, public comments. Anybody here?
I said two weird things, Mark, but I remember the other night. In recent months, we've had discussions about increasing communication in the town and looking at our website. I would like to propose this Wednesday, I was able to set up a meeting with a local website designer. And I'd like to invite two members of the council, John, Eric and myself, to meet here in this meeting room with the website designer. They've already looked at our current website. They recently have designed the websites for the local county government team and the town car lot and several other government agencies throughout northwest Indiana. Therefore, I'd like to see the proposal. I would like to also get some pricing from them eventually. And then also, I think this is a great opportunity for us as a town to look at a avenue where we could have a subscribe function on our website where residents could subscribe to town newsletters, town information and that. And then if they no longer want to subscribe, they can simply unsubscribe from this link on our website. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to grow our website. We need to look at some alternatives or options. So therefore I'd like to invite two members of the council to join us on Wednesday at 1 P M.
Good time.
All right, so do we have two members who want to attend that? Because we can only have two who go with their own.
I can make it.
Yeah, I'm a little reluctant with my daughters.
But I can try. But I mean, one, one P M. We've nobody else to do that. So. Yeah. Got minutes here. Here, one. The last thing I had, I just wanted to inform the council, seek your consent. Previously I sat on the state of Indiana Department of Corrections Advisory Council for Requesting Indiana for Department of Corrections, Prisons. I was recently invited to rejoin the advisory council for Indiana Department of Corrections to sit on the board that meets twice a year. Um, it's a simple meeting, two, maybe three hours at a time. There's a lot of state legislators that sit on the board, the federal law enforcement officials are the county sheriff and then other state officials that are on this board. I would like to go back to the board. I think it would be a good representation of the town. I can use my greatest experience and knowledge of that board and in the law enforcement field and then have the town connected to several of our state officials that attend this meeting as well. So I'm just looking for consent from all of you tonight to allow me, time, can you attend the two meetings out of the year? Like you said, we need to be a great representation.
Are they in Hawaii?
You either go here to the Indiana State Prison on the Sims West Side or you drive to West Philly, Indiana, you go to the State Prison. So sometimes you do have lunch. So the prison lunch is actually consumption lunch. So I just want to share with you rather than sending out an email to you. I had all the here tonight. Um, like you said, I'm in support of it and you do, you will.
All in favor of supporting the chief, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, public comments. Anybody here have public comments? Anybody on Zoom have public comments?
Yeah. I'm not sure if you can hear me. It's, it's Tim Art. I tried waving. I, I got a comment on the, on the stop eight.
Your address?
Sorry. 1703, 1703 Lake Shore Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I, I heard some of the discussion. I heard Doug Levy talk about stop 18, to know what the bridge looks like. And I, I've written a couple emails, you know, to the park board over the last two years. Cause the last, the last section of that boardwalk that comes down with that nice railing is, is really too steep. So wherever this bridge starts, I'm hoping somebody's taken into consideration that we're going to have a, you know, some kind of a walkway that isn't slippery. I mean, the, the, the last section of that boardwalk is, 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 you know, it's way beyond what the minimum uh, incline would be for any kind of an OSHA thing. I know it's not a egress or whatever, but it's, it's twice as steep as, as what a normal incline would be on a walkway. So I'm hoping that maybe we can address that last section too, you know, when the, when the, when the contractor does that ramp. I mean, in the past, I mean, you know, going, going back to when that stop was done. You know, I, I'm thinking somewhere in the range of 50 grand a town spent to, to do that walkway. And the whole design where the, you know, the, the road washout intersects with the path to the beach just always seemed like such a poor design. Um, and this bridge sounds fantastic, you know? I hope there's enough money that you're allocating to do a nice job. I mean, many of the other stops have got, you know, kind of permanent walkways coming down. I'm thinking down by stop 14, maybe it is. There's concrete, um, going a little bit further north. There's some nice steel structures that have been put in. I, I'm just looking at any kind of a, a bridge or whatever. And if it's made out of timbers or whatever, and we got that tremendous amount of water coming down from, from the road, it's going to wash anything out again. I mean, it's like, it's kind of like the Grand Canyon as everybody is, is realized at, at this point. So I'm just hoping there's enough money put in there to, to really do a nice job there and not, not something that's just temporary. I mean, we used to, to be honest, we used to have that concrete road that, that was, a lot of that, a lot of that rainwater would go down that concrete road that was ripped out as, as part of this renovation of stop 18. So I'm, I'm hoping, just like Mr. Levy, I think is hoping there that it's, it's done in some kind of a permanent manner. I mean, we're, we're in our seventies, you know, we're, we're stepping over the roots right now and rocks and stuff. But it's, it's, it's still, it's still our way to get to the beach. So hope, I'm just hoping whatever's being done is going to be adequate. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Anybody else, public comments?
Hi there. Just. Can you guys hear me? This is probably a response to the gentleman who just talked. Jim, was it? Can you hear me? Tim, I'm sorry. T D Lee.
No, T D.
Your microphone, your microphone is not working.
It's a green button.
I, I couldn't hear you.
I can. Can you?
I could, I could hear you before. Yeah.
Is everyone awake? Testing? Okay. I will let her know. Tim, is that awake? Stand here. Stand here.
We can hear you fine.
Okay, so I'm on the board. I just wanted to discuss a whole thing. So, um, just on the last, I was coming up with a solution, but in your response to that stock costing fifty thousand dollars, that rumor has come up time and time again and we clarified that several times. And, um, there should be no question that that stock was seventeen thousand three hundred dollars. And they're all available for public information requests and we've given these out before. So by no means that stock was seventeen thousand three hundred dollars. And obviously Mr. Terry should have invoices in his office at the town court. But I just need to clarify this because that rumor keeps perpetuating itself and I'm not sure where it's coming from, but we need to be clear on that price. And also, so I'm happy to register to give you guys a, a result. We will add some slack traction to help with the skids when you go down, you put some on, but it then washed away. So we'll take care of that too. But, um, you know, the origin is from the rocks being removed and the water and the rain running off. It has nothing to do with the driveway that was on, but the property that was removed. So just need to be clear about this and not, not keep discussing it. So, I mean, thanks for all your input and stuff, but please, you know, I just wanted to be, to be clear on that. So hopefully a week or two, we'll have all this, um, settled down. And one of the properties anyways is they're available from Mr. Terry's office and the town courts who've got them all for the cost.
How's your house? How's your house?
I think the motion was here.
My second. All favor say aye?
Aye.